This public hearing to order, this is going to be discussing the vacation of County Road A 17. We have anyone here that would like to speak on behalf of the vacation? Any other commissioners? Any thoughts about the vacation of A 17?
Do you have any, any issues or comments? Okay.
We'll see no comments or objections, we'll go ahead and close this public hearing.
Regular meeting order for the county commissioners. I have a proposal of allegiance. Commissioner Kirk. I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the fire of the state of New Mexico. And to this symbol of our friendship and one united culture.
If you would want to clarify what our group of agenda. I would like to strike item 15 from the agenda. 15 is to throw in powers of creation between Colfax County and Springer to provide terminal shelter facility within the boundaries of the town. Mr. Chairman, can you give me explanation why Mr. Kirk is... That we just... what? And would you mind?
Sure, since they right now are just not ready to move forward on this. And so we talked to Mayor Lopez last night, and it was time to move it forward for a while until we could get some things addressed.
So is this an issue with the town of Springer or with Colfax County?
Neither one. We're just going to move later to a later agenda.
Any other questions or concerns? I'll entertain wishes to approve the agenda.
I make motion to approve the agenda as amended second.
And you remember?
Mr. Kirk.
Yes, Mr. Kirk. Yes.
Chairman.
Yes. Moving on to item number five, approval of regular meeting minutes for regular 25. 23 budget workshop minutes for May 14. Are there any adjustments you'd like made or... Hi, I am the... Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve both the regular meetings and the budget workshop meeting. So moved. Thank you.
Mr. Kirk.
Yes.
Mr. Kirk.
Yes.
Chairman.
Yes. Item six, recognition of visitors. Can we start over here as agenda and move to the right, move places, introduce yourselves?
John Hackett County Manager's Office. Senator Torres Chief Deputy.
Gerald Smith. Smith Stewart Racks.
Tommy Hill, Emergency Manager.
I'm Deosoto, IT.
Rob Moore, Republican Party. Data Republican Party.
Can you flag to the manager's office?
That's Stephen Ford. Underwater, counter. Mr. Lopez.
Thank you all for coming. If you have any questions on the... Yes, sir. So moving on to item number seven, it's public comment. Thank you all for coming today. If you have any public comment that has something to say. If you're talking about any line item on our agenda, though, I'll let you speak during that time. Is there anyone here with public comment?
Morning Commissioners, thank you Tommy Hill for this event. Since it wasn't on the agenda, but we had a new fire start in the region, wanted to quickly break you guys up. Current status of that one. So Las Coles's fire was discovered about 5:50 PM yesterday. Initial response was local VFP East, and then that's in the Las Vegas Porcher District, and they set up in Egypt as well. Through the night, fire burned about 75 to 100 acres in evening period, minimal growth overnight, so right now 100 acres plus or minus. Last night they were able to get a dozer on it, to start pushing up one of the sides. Today they have a hotshot crew coming up from Santa Fe, also a type two initial attack crew and crew coming in as well. So right now, again, fire showing minimal growth, it's burning in a mix of grass, ponderosa pine and pinum juniper. The, the reason why this one is so important is it's basically our first fire in the timber for the season. Up until now we've had plenty of grass fires, but there's a significant difference between 100 acre grass fire and 100 acre timber fire. So it pretty much is the start of our major wildfire season at this point. The fuel conditions are prime throughout the entire region for this type of fire. And it can be expected this probably through the next coming months until hot season. Some details on that, so looking at image number one, if you can go to that. That's the big picture there, so you can see the fire is about six miles south of Guadalupe, right off the 434, just east side there. Linear distance from Colfax County boundary puts it about 12 miles away from our nearest point, maybe 10 miles, somewhere in that area. But again, that, that kind of depends on topography as well. As you can see on that large image, we have a, a major burn scar just to the west of that. So there's no potential that thing going west. Right now, conditions pushing into the northeast. So again, big picture, if this thing really got out of hand. Current conditions, we're expecting, you know, 15 mile per hour winds today, possibly 20. Red flag conditions today and tomorrow. If this thing really took off, it's still four or five days away from Colfax County. So it's, it's not a threat to our, our community at this point. Of course, that could change later on down the line. And of course, big picture ideas, if this thing did get out of hand, north of it, is what's called Martinez Canyon. Runs north and south along 434, all the way up in Colfax County. That's one of those double edged swords, it's a good thing. Fire can easily get into Martinez Canyon, has a hard time getting out. You have steep slopes, minimal fuel conditions on the sites of those slopes. It gets down in there, yeah, it's going to burn, it's going to burn, but it's going to have a hard time climbing out. So that creates a buffer to immediate north. To the northeast, there were a number contingency lines put in last year as a result of the CAF Canyon fire. The major one being improvements of that Highway 120 that comes along in length all the way down to Oka Camp. So that thing was expanded, improved, a lot of the fuels were removed from the side of that road. But then coming closer in, just to the northeast of that fire, there are a number of dozer lines that are put in contingency. And I can't remember the name of that ranch there, but those dozer lines did show growth of light fuels over the year, but once you have an established dozer line, and that ranch did opt leave that dozer line partially in place instead of completely turn back standards. So be really easy to go in and open that up, again, that's big picture. If we can go to number two. That's looking in closer in on where the fire exists right now, so it burned up the western slope of that ridge line, topped out on top of that ridge. Kind of died out around 8:00 PM last night or so, once it topped on that ridge, had a hard time going back down. They got that dozer, they worked that northern flank coming across the top. And then they had some hand crews coming along that southern flank, as well as that engine was scouting out on top of that ridge line. Today, though, we put those hand crews up there on top of that ridge and working that into the backside of it. So the median features is you have that County Road A 20, I believe, that creates a loop around where that fire is, it basically goes around that, that single solitary ridge line. So that's an excellent holding feature. To the immediate east of that, goes into some flatlands, farmland, a lot of grass. But pretty easy to catch it out there before it reaches it to heavy fuels going to the east, so if it did, it do run north, there's a short gap there between it gets to some heavy fuels to the next ridge line to the north. So that would probably be the biggest concern, but I know there are looking at that, and that, that was the reason for pushing that dozer on the top of that. Looking through today, it's possible we'll be getting some air on this thing. We do have two other fires in Mexico that popped up yesterday down by Socorro. So that could be playing some of the air assets, again, it depends on, you know, critical conditions, weather conditions, as well as critical heat. There are also two fires started in there, it's not as if it's a fire as well. Hopefully we'll be able to get at least some minimal air on it as well. And then if we can look at number three. So that's a better idea, the fuel conditions, you can see it's burning on that isolated ridge line there. Plenty of grass surrounding that, almost 360, again, there's that narrow gap to the north. But, so those light fuels, easy to catch it out when air drags, winds don't completely take off. Again, we're expecting a maximum of 20 mile per hour gusts today, probably steady breeze of 10 to 15 miles per hour. So we are looking at red flag conditions, it's something to watch. Kind of the final note, I'll throw in this, is when the fire started, there are immediate concerns about Kind of the final note I'll throw on this is when the fire started, there are immediate concerns about true location. Really figured out where it was. It looked a lot closer to the county boundary and had been, you know, a little bit further east and north. Certainly, we'd be looking at worse than a threat to us at this time. But and then the final cautionary note is, obviously, if a fire's starting, fuel conditions just to the south of us, and that means we have that same ability here in Colfax County. And so it's advisable that, you know, we hold our resources tight as necessary. If they call traditional resources from support from Colfax County, certainly provide that, I believe. But again, it's be a good idea to keep our folks close because we could certainly be seeing that through the end of the week, possibility of some isolated thunderstorms coming in. And of course, what that always means is a hundred percent lightning and ten percent precipitation. So that's kind of where we stand. Available for questions?
So Thomas, how big does this need to get before we start looking at the sheriff insipid, where you said though?
This thing would have to really get legs under and take off. So my best guess is on possibilities, I think probably a fifty percent possibility that they catch it roughly within its boundaries today. I think that's if the weather participates. Bill will wrangle it in hundred acres, hundred acre plus. That's the most likely scenario. Probably a higher scenario of it, I'd say thirty to forty percent of it taking out that entire block right there, that single ridge line. But then that, you know, next line out, that county road, I think, pretty easy to catch it on there, especially with the resources they already have and the resources that are incoming. So minimal chance, five to ten percent of that thing jumps containment, gets into those heavy fuels to the northeast, starts heading in. If that happens again, I would say we wouldn't foresee a threat to Colfax County for four or five days. So in the idea of a hundred acre timber fire, that's that's a lifetime. Probably in the next day or two, really gonna tell us what's what's going on. So I don't I don't see there being a threat, a need for us to really take my attention at this point other than stand by to stand by and then keep an eye on what's going on in our.
Any idea? Start with?
No. There wasn't much lightning from the past day in that area. Through the weekend, there was some isolated lightning. Couldn't be all over that. That is close in to the Las Costas community, little incorporated community, south of Guadalupe. Right in near some structures. There aren't any structures threatened at this point. I should add that. But right in near some structures, so it wouldn't surprise me if it was something stupid, something curious, something along those lines. But I know that's under investigation still.
Thank you. Okay, any more questions?
Thank you, Tom.
Anyone who can join in some questions? Thank you, Tom. So move on to our next item. Discussion action. Commissioners?
Not at this time.
Mr. Kerr?
I have nothing.
I do not have any questions either. So I'll undertake a motion to approve expenditures. I'll make a motion to approve the expenditures. Can I have a second? Motion to adopt. Ready? Let's move on to item number nine, presentation of fiscal year twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two. Hello, Heather.
Good morning, Chair Commissioners. I hope you all are doing well. I'm gonna actually share my screen so I can pop the presentation up on the screen.
Are you able to? I might need to make you host, Heather, if not.
Yeah, it says. Thank you. Okay, so we're gonna go through the twenty twenty two audit results. If you have any questions, please feel free to ask, or you can always wait till the end, whichever is more convenient. This first slide we have talks about our responsibilities under U S government auditing standards. That first kind of lime colored box states that we're responsible for expressing an opinion about whether the financial statements are materially correct. Us expressing an opinion does not relieve management or those charged with government of their responsibilities. That second red box states that we obtain reasonable rather than absolute assurance about whether the financial statements are free of material misstatements. Now, what that means is, in order for us to obtain absolute assurance, we would be required to test every transaction. And we don't look at every transaction, rather we use sampling methodologies, statistics, things like that. And so because we use those different methodologies and we do not look at every transaction, we have to state that we provide reasonable assurance. And that reasonable assurance, when we use those statistics, those samples, we basically expand that out to the entire population, and that's how we come up with our comfort level. That bottom corner box, kind of that tile card box, talks about that we also incorporate into our audit consideration of internal controls over financial reporting. So as part of our audit, as part of our risk assessments, we do go in and we look at the county's internal controls. We look at internal controls over dispersments, internal controls over payroll, cash receipts, various cycles that the county has. However, we do not express an opinion on those internal controls. We simply come in, we look to see if the county has internal controls that are implemented. If there's internal controls implemented, are they operating effectively? And based on that, we make recommendations to the county. If we see any areas where things aren't operating effectively, or where we feel that maybe some changes need to be made. And then that last box states that we're responsible for communicating significant matters that arise during the audit to management and those charged with governments. And so if we come across something during the audit that we feel like is a significant issue, or we feel that those charged with governance need to be aware of it, we will bring those matters to your attention. This next slide states that we have issued what is referred to as an unmodified or a clean opinion for the twenty twenty two audit. Next, in addition to the annual financial report, we also issued two additional reports. So if you look through your financial statements, you'll see the first report in there is the audit opinion. And then in addition to the audit opinion, we have what's referred to as a report on internal control over financial reporting. And then we have a report on compliance for each major federal program, or often referred to as your single audit report. The the report on internal controls discusses findings. And then your report on compliance is because the county did receive more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in federal funding in FY twenty two. And so for your single audit report, we did issue an unmodified clean opinion. However, there are findings associated with the compliance report and with the internal controls. The next slide, these are communications we're required to discuss. And so this first one, if we encountered any difficulties during the audit, we would be required to communicate that. We did not have any difficulties with the county. However, due to the special audit, we did have some timing issues and some delay there. And we had to wait and work with the state auditor's office on those items. Those were the only difficulties encountered during the audit. The next slide discusses significant audit adjustments or any unusual adjustments. The only adjustments we had in the FY twenty two audit are the normal cash to accrual adjustments. So those are like your accounts payable items, accounts receivable, adjustments for fixed assets and depreciation, pension and O P E B. Our next slide talks about disagreements with management. So if we had any disagreements with management that we couldn't resolve, we would be required to communicate those with the commission. And we are happy to say we did not have any disagreements with management during the audit. This next slide talks about management's consultation with all accountants. This is often referred to as opinion shopping. So if for some reason we made a recommendation to management, or we were discussing items and they didn't agree with us, and they went out and sought other accountants' opinions on that, and we became aware of that information, we would be required to communicate that. We are not aware of that happening during the FY twenty two audit.
Our next question about that?
Sure.
So the the work that we had done in relation to Roadrunner Healthcare, that doesn't, that's not considered consultation with another accounting firm?
It's not in regards to the audit. So so that communication is audit specific. So you can go out and you can have special audits done, and there can be even the federal government coming in, can do additional audits. What that slide previously is discussing is more, for example, we had a new Gatsby pronouncement come out in twenty two over leases. And if we presented that information to management and said, based on this new pronouncement, you know, we need to present leases in a new way, and management didn't agree with us, and they went out seeking another accountant's opinion on that. That is the type of information we would be required to disclose. However, external consultation for things like the Roadrunner Health issue, like I said, if the federal government were to come in, those items, because they're outside of the audit, don't fall under that communication.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Our next slide starts the current year findings. There were sixteen findings in the current year. So this first finding talks about exceeding contract maximum payment. So within contracts, most of the time, you know, there are limits set in there. And so this first finding addresses an instance where the contract amount was exceeded by the county. The second finding discusses unrelated expense, payment for unrelated expenses. Again, this relates to a contract where the county paid for items that were outside of the scope of that contract. The third finding talks about a lack of detail. So when reviewing invoices, it was really difficult to determine what those invoices were for, as the level of detail within the invoice didn't identify specific items. The fourth finding discusses personnel files. So while performing internal controls over the personnel files, we were unable to obtain current personal action forms for seven out of the twenty six personnel files we looked at. So we were unable to find updated pay rates. There was nothing in those individuals' files for those pay rates. The fifth finding discuss discusses cash dispersments. So for one of forty two dispersments, we were unable to locate a purchase order. Finding number six discusses management override of controls. So the county has internal controls in place to mitigate this. However, during the FY twenty two audit, it was identified that those controls were being circumvented. Finding number seven discusses payments for unallowable costs. So again, this goes back to one of the contracts, and within the contract, there were specific items laid out, and there were payments made that were outside of the scope of that contract. Finding eight talks about premium payments. So this is related to the ARPA funding. The ARPA funding came out and the premium payments were allowed. However, under the final rule, there were specific guidelines for those payments, and the county had issues where those individuals were not paid correctly under that final rule. Item number nine is procurement. So the county purchased airport fuel. However, when purchasing that airport fuel, they didn't go through the correct procurement process. Item number ten is for I nine compliance. So every employee with the county is required to have a federal form I nine that is completed correctly. And so we had three of the nine that were not completed correctly. For item eleven, para exemptions. So every individual that's exempt from para has to have a form on file that's also submitted to para that states why they're exempt. Item number twelve is anti donations. This all relates to that premium pay under the final rule. Some individuals were not eligible for premium payments, and that's what this finding relates to. Item thirteen is exceeding elected official pay. There was an individual given additional pay midterm per state statute that's not allowed. Item fourteen, failure to get O S A approval. So the county did have their special audit. Under the state audit rule, all audits that are done through the state are required to have a contract approved by O S A prior to beginning work. Item number fifteen is the late audit. This was because the audit was submitted after the county's December first deadline. This this finding did relate to us having to wait for that special audit to be issued. And then the last finding is conflict of interest. So there was a former employee that was also listed as an employee for a company that the county was doing contract work with while still employed at the county. So that covers all of the current year findings. Is there any additional questions?
I just have one as as being on the employee that said that I was working for Roadrunner Health under contract. That is false. I was not. I did not start employment with Roadrunner till after I departed from the county. Thank you. That's all. Thank you, Heather.
Thank you, Mr. Kerr. Questions? I guess I have one more question. Sorry, go back where it showed item thirteen over payment of elected officials. I know with the ARPA funds, the commission has gone back, the county manager's office has gone back and retrieved these funds, houses to ask the county manager, as the same thing does item thirteen.
Commissioner, to answer your question, when we found out that premium pay had been paid to people that under law weren't allowed, we instituted a lawsuit, and we have went back and have worked with those individuals to basically correct all that and get payments coming into the county. That that process is ongoing as we speak.
So have we collected, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, of course.
Have we collected all the money that was paid in violation of state law?
We have not. We are still working towards that, and that's one of the reasons that the county filed a lawsuit. We cover those files.
So we filed a lawsuit against the people that were paid and have not paid the money back?
That's correct.
Thank you. See no further questions. Thank you, Heather, for your presentation.
Thank you.
Move on to item number ten, presentation to the yes governor, health council, the back sheet. It's an update to the national bill, but I believe it's going to be substantial. And I also believe, I'm not sure if it's a giving a person.
I'm also.
Thank you so much. Thank you. When you speak, would you want to begin it with her?
So I'm filling in for Ashley today. So the Colfax County Yes Program, we offer home visiting and we do prenatal up from birth up to five years. We do breastfeeding and lactation consulting. We offer parenting classes, developmental screenings, and we work closely with CBPIR and ROME and CYFD. Another home visiting program is we provide educational services and we work with families who can able to reach age five throughout Colfax and Union Counties both. Our home visiting program helps families connect with resources in their community and online to discover ways to support parents' relationship with their baby and their development. Prematal and breastfeeding information is provided to support families. We follow the curriculum, partners for LPB and nurturing parenting that provide handouts and workbooks. And then the CBPIR is community-based intervention prevention and reunification. The CBPIR works closely with CYFD to provide support for families who have sustained and unsustained cases with CYFD throughout Colfax and Union Counties. CYFD will recommend goals families, that the families can benefit from working on. Families support specialists will work with families to achieve these goals and are in close contact with CYFD regarding families' progress. The same curriculum is used in CBPIR, but in addition utilizing the materials for nurturing parenting for five years to eighteen years old. Circles of security and children in between can also be offered to these families and just also additional resources. Families support specialists administer screenings and provide resources and referrals to families. They are eligible for an emergency dis, dis, dis. Funds of three hundred and fifty dollars to aid with everyday needs such as utilities, rent and other needs that are deemed as an emergency. ROME stands for Rural Obstetric Access Maternal Services. ROME provides breastfeeding education and support to families throughout Colfax and Union Counties. A family navigator employed by Holy Cross Hospital works closely with prenatal and new mothers who are patients at Miners Colfax Medical Center, OB-GYN Clinic and Union County General Hospital Clinic. The family navigator will refer clients who are interested in breastfeeding or new mothers who have questions or concerns about nursing their babies. And then the last slide is just the VRH participation. Do you guys have any questions?
Thank you very much. Just a little background on the yes program. It's a federally funded grant that Colfax County has disallowed before. So I do want to say hi. I've seen you guys and thank you for getting out of the community. Recently saw you at the house there. And I did, I have a little two-year-old son, and I found some of your information very helpful or useful. Picked up your identification card. So it's one of the things I'm actually gonna, I filled out. Worked on giving my sense of things, just in case. So that was good information. I haven't personally had any questions or commissioners for the commission.
Oh yeah, Mr. Chairman. I'm sorry, can you go into a little bit more detail on the parenting classes? What do they consist of?
I have not been with the yes program very long. I was filling in for Ashley today. So I might be able to give a little bit of my supervisory to let you know. I have not been trained or informed on any of that yet, so I'm still learning. So I'm not sure I can answer that very well. But I know like, if you have families that are CYFD-referred or they have like core order, you know, parenting stuff, that we'll do classes separately or together with parents and help them in some way to do it now.
So my question is, would that be open to anybody? So let's say that we have a young couple or a young person that unexpectedly was on their way to becoming a parent and were nervous about that. Did they come to you guys for some support and education on what it's gonna take to be a parent?
I don't think so. From what I've been told, I didn't do the parenting classes, but before I had my son, I joined the yes program. They gave me a lot of resources and stuff before I had him. I believe anybody can come if we could just, information or anything that they write.
So there's no qualifications required that you're aware of?
Not that I'm aware of.
You don't have to be involved with CYFD?
No, you don't have to be involved, right?
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner?
I have no questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Sanchez. I appreciate you kind of being there. So we'll go ahead and do one on item eleven, discussion, action, resolution twenty-two-three dash fifteen. The resolution for vacate, vacate portion of County Road D seventeen.
Yes, so we're finding out the final steps of vacating the county road for Gerald Smith. So I'm here just to get the approval for it. So we did do the road review and everything, and we did follow all the steps, and I did get a June on it. The final step is getting the commission's approval on that.
Thank you very much, Commissioner.
I guess, Mr. Chairman, was there any opposition to this at all?
No, there wasn't.
Commissioner?
No, that was my same question. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Smith, I just want to thank you for your patience with us, taking a little bit of extra time. But thank you. So I'll entertain a motion to vacate the portion of County Road D seventeen.
I make a motion to approve resolution twenty-two-three dash fifteen, a resolution ordering vacation of a portion of County Road D seventeen.
Okay. It's the move that's seconded, Commissioner Kern?
Yes.
Or sorry.
For Mr. Kern.
Yes.
Commissioner.
Yes.
Commissioner.
Yes. Questions asked? Thank you.
Thank you.
So moving on to item twelve, discussion slash action of NCN and PDD. It's North, North Central New Mexico Economic Development District. Employment of Colfax County Community Representatives, Randy Deets.
Can you hear me okay? Okay. So my name is Randy Deets. I am the president of Grover Town. And Commissioner Weir had approached us at the beginning of the year and asked us to be, if we would be interested in being the community representative at the NCN. That Deets monthly in Santa Fe and occasionally employed person. And we had appointed for our organization Anita Velasquez, but she has recently left the organization. And so I'm here to ask that I be appointed instead. And I wanted to introduce myself to the commission for those of you who have not, who I have not had the opportunity, opportunity to meet. I'm actually a transplant here from Dallas, Texas. My husband and I have been here for two years, and I now consider myself a Mexican, not a Texan anymore. This was a place that we would always stop on our way to vacation in Colorado. And then one day we just stopped moving on. And we set up shop here. My husband and I, we got to the passenger inn. And we've been running that with a small housekeeping staff for the last two and a half years. And I've been involved with Grover Town for about two years now. We are very interested in being involved in the community. And we are interested in seeing Rato, Ryo Rato area forever. And I did bring a summary of my background as well as a couple copies of my resume. If you are interested in looking at that and learning more about me and my professional background. I mostly got worked in the law firm for about twenty years as support staff, starting as a legal assistant, paralegal. And then I was marketing director for the law firm when I left. I've been in the marketing role for about sixteen years at that point. Worked my way up through the, for the mailroom, guys.
Thank you very much. Misses, any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I don't have any questions, but I do want to make it clear to the public that the reason I think that Grover Town is an important agency to Colfax County is even though the name is Grover Town, if you look at their charter, it does include all of Colfax County. They're, I don't remember the exact language, but it says Ratone.
It's the Greater Rato Economic Development.
Greater Rato, so which indicates it's, they actually have expressed interest in things even going on in the valley in the past. And I know Anita had attended several meetings that were related to economic development in the valley. And that's why I recommended her and Grover Town for this position at North Central. So every county in the seven counties that are, that are kind of eight counties, really, it's a long story. But seven counties that are represented by North Central Economic Development, they all have a governmental representative. They have a, one of the other types of representatives they have is, they have at-large representative, and then they have an economic development representative. Since North Central is an economic development council of governments. And so I think that with Grover Town's history of stability and the interaction you see with them, with the community, I think that their great resource will well represent all of Colfax County at North Central New Mexico Economic Development District.
Thank you, Commissioner. I have, I have. Thank you very much. It's all entertaining motion from Randy Deets. North Central New Mexico Economic Development.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to nominate Randy Deets from Grover Town to represent Colfax County as economic development or North Central New Mexico Economic Development District.
Second. Thank you.
Commissioner Kern.
Yes.
Commissioner.
Yes.
Chairman.
Yeah, true. So we'll move on to item thirteen, discussion, action, property use and liability agreement. With Colfax County, Rato Main Street, International San Francisco Room. I believe this is something I've worked on for a number of years. We've been, I've been here to speak on my behalf. The only comment I would have is I'd ask the county manager. I'd like to give the, our little area out there, make some improvements as far as fix some of the gaps. Make it more presentable to the public, just in general, not particularly for this, this ministry event. All entertaining, is there any questions, discussions? All entertaining motion?
I move to approve the property use liability agreement with Colfax County and Rato Main Street.
Second.
Mr. Kern.
Yes.
Mr. Kern.
Yes.
Chairman.
Yes. Moving on to item fourteen, discussion, action, real property transfer within Colfax County City. So I guess.
Sure. We have been working with the city of Raton and the management there to actually construct and operate and maintain a photovoltaic facility, which is a solar farm and out of the old Mesa Airport. The county has actually have worked to donate ten acres of the city of Raton for that purpose. And essentially, that's what this real estate, real property transfer, that is about. So we're going to be giving the property to the city of Raton so that they can work on that solar farm. And once again, I think it's estimated that the rate payers within this area would get like a thinking the credit to benefit all the rate payers in the area as well. As now we're now generating more electricity. So anyway, I think it's a good contract. I think if someone's again, shows collaboration between the city of Raton and Colfax County, for the citizens of Missouri.
Thank you, County Manager. I believe this was passed by the prior commission. But I do want it to be noted that I talked with the county attorney. He does not see any issue of potential conflict of interest. Again, I desire an order by the public service company as their treasurer. So I just want to make that clear. I do get paid very minimal side benefit in these meetings. So just to prove, just to state that. And also, I, I would ask that all of us commissioners, we put on the assignment section of the. Questions?
I have just one question. I support this very strongly. But since we are separating off ten acres in that, and this may be a question for June, do we have to go through a claim of exemption since we're splitting the property?
Can you get me, morning, Chairman of Commissioners, Commissioner Kern, I got your, the question. So I think that was a very good question, ma'am. I think that was the question right now has been answered, prepared by City of Raton and County in response to the New Mexico Financial Authority's question. So we are preparing for that question, to that matter. And then as long as we got the proof, this matter subject to the approval from the Board of Finance at that time, and the City of Raton, if they acquired that property, and then, you know, they have, you know, they need to follow up with the Board of Finance, whether or not, what kind of zoning exemption should be made. So I think at this time, the question before the commissioner is making sure that whether or not we can approve this MOU subject to the Board of Finance and then all the inquiry, including zoning and exemption issues.
So in other words, the, Mr. Chairman, so in other words, the, we have to get approval from DFA before we take the step to do subdivisions or any of that stuff? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
So it's just, it's in work, it's gonna have to be subdivided. But first, we need to get DFA approval, is what it sounds like June is saying. So I guess, these are the question. The city will be asked to pay subdivision fees. I know they're not significant. I'm sure they'll be happy to do that. But it will be some fees to subdivide. So I assume the city will pay those fees.
So under our current MOU, the commissioners, I think the city will be responsible for all the expenditures, including zoning and then survey, and any type of expenditures we requested for. And then they, the city cannot record that, you know, our proposed deed after the commission approved, unless they performed all the requirement under this MOU. So therefore, I think of, you know, the city has agreed to the pay for the expenditure at this time. But I think at this time, for the purpose of this, moving on with, you know, financial authority procedure, I think, you know, they need, want the signature from the MOU from both end governing body are required.
Thank you, June.
No problem, sir.
Further questions? I wonder if any questions?
I'll say.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Kern.
Yes.
Yes. I'm, I'm thinking this. Special district, state and county.
Good morning, Commissioners, County Manager, Battle Clerk, I'm bringing this back before commission today. So it was reported by the county manager's office last meeting that a check was issued in the amount of four thousand five hundred seventy-one dollars and fifty-seven cents. Um, was made to Mark and Annette McCoy based on documentation submitted to the manager's office. However, it was brought to the attention of the manager's office that the check had already been paid by the treasurer's office back in January to satisfy the court order. Um, in working with the treasurer's office in an attempt to reissue a check, it was determined that the manager's office did not have sufficient asset necessary to issue payment. After reviewing the maintenance, commission-approved payment to be issued to Springer High School in the amount of twenty thousand sixty-three dollars and forty-five cents. Hospital dish of nine thousand five hundred thirty-four dollars and eighty-three cents. And Luna for six thousand seven hundred forty-nine dollars and thirty-one cents. For a total of thirty-six thousand three hundred forty-seven dollars and twenty-nine cents. However, the treasurer requested the manager's office issue a check for sixty-seven thousand three hundred twenty-five dollars and eleven cents. In discussing with the deputy treasurer, sixty-seven thousand three hundred twenty-five dollars and twelve cents was needed to correct all agencies affected. Um, there was additional agencies that were affected. If you look at the spreadsheet, um, the new changes or the correct changes to Springer schools, twenty thousand sixty-three dollars and forty-five cents. Rattone Public Schools, three hundred and forty dollars and seventy-nine cents. Maxwell Schools, nine dollars and seventy-nine cents. South Central Hospital, nine thousand five hundred fifty-one dollars and thirteen cents. Luna Votech, six thousand seven hundred sixty-one dollars and six cents. Um, New Mexico State levy, three thousand eight dollars seven, or three thousand eight hundred seven dollars and forty-eight cents. And Culpeper County levy, twenty-six thousand seven hundred nine dollars and forty-two cents. Which totals sixty-seven thousand three hundred twenty-five dollars and twelve cents, which the check will be paid to Culpeper County. Most time for any questions.
Yeah, I'm not, I guess, Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm not sure why. I mean, I understand that we're going through this again just because the amounts changed. Because where initial, if you look back at initially, the amount being repaid to the plaintiff is different than the amount that's being paid to the school districts. And I mean, they're not related to each other because um, the amount that was paid to the plaintiff was ordered by the courts. In conjunction with that information, this, what the commission has already approved is that the separately from that, totally separately, is that the the parties that were affected by this, the reimbursed, or it's not actually reimbursed, be paid to the amounts that was withheld from them or that they did not receive because of the lawsuit. And so those two amounts are different. I don't, I know that we were presented with information, but if you look at the motion, the motion wasn't specific to dollar amounts. The motion was, it was specific to dollar.
Yes.
Yes. I vote.
Yes, if you actually look in the packet that I prepared, there's a copy of the minutes in there. And under, I don't remember. Sorry, I, I need to see what page it's on. I didn't remember it. But within the packet that I gave you, there's, and it's, I, I just gave it to you guys this morning. Um, the minutes are on there. It's the second to the last page. And it's, um, around the middle of the page, it specifically states that Commissioner Kern made a motion to hold the affected entities harmless. And the county will compensate the affected entities with the following amounts. Springer High School, twenty thousand sixty-three dollars and forty-five cents. Hospital dish of nine thousand five thirty-four fifty-three. And Luna, six thousand four, six thousand seven hundred forty-nine dollars and thirty-one cents. Um, so not only the, the totals change, but that did not include Maxwell Schools and Rattone Schools and the state and county levy. And I'm not sure if it was, I'm not sure how it was presented. Whenever I went back to the minutes, I didn't hear any conversation or discussion about Maxwell, Rattone, state or county. It was only discussed Springer. So we just wanted to make sure that you were aware that there was three other agencies as well as state and county.
I think it makes sense to all entities. So like the, including legally just the county, so. So we're ready to.
And we're, and we're going to make the state whole?
So you guys, we have to the commission, in my conversation with Alfonso, uh, in order for the treasurer to properly get their paperwork recorded, they would have to adjust the state and county as well.
Well, I disagree that, I agree that the party should be made whole. Um, I disagree that the state and county should be made whole on this. This is an exception that we're doing because the county made a mistake or in how this was handled. And we're trying to make whole like the original motion was the entities in our county that were affected by it. I don't understand why we should write ourselves a check or why we should write the state a check. To me, I, I don't think that makes sense.
I, I could answer the question on behalf of the treasurer or on behalf of the treasurer. It was requested from the treasurer's office that the check not be paid to municipalities, but they be paid to Culpeper County. Um, for her proper running forever keeping on the treasurer's side. Um, I guess we're interested to be for clarification on the dollar amount of the check because if we make a sixty-seven thousand dollar check, it would include the state and county levy. Um, if commission only wants Springer, Rattone, Maxwell, South Central Hospital, Luna, that's a different amount. Um, that the, that the county manager's office would be, have the authority to, to actually.
Would it be possible we get somebody from the treasurer's office here? I mean, I'm surprised there's nobody here from the treasurer's office.
Um, I had originally talked to Alfonso to be present today, however, an email from the treasurer's office stated that he would not be available, so I think it is coming.
So, uh, thank you for coming, Madam Treasurer. Do you mind coming up and explaining to us why we need to reimburse the state and the county on this?
In order for me to do it in the treasurer's office, which I have already moved back the taxural changes to the way it was, I can't take and choose what entities get it. If you want to pick and choose, you will have to send it to those entities, but it won't be a proper paper trail. So what needs to be done is to pay the whole amount back. And then at the end of the month, when I do a distribution, it goes to, it'll go to the county, they'll get their twenty um, I don't have that paper, it's a twenty-six thousand and, yeah. Yeah, so all those monies. They'll go back, but that's the only pro, that's the only way to be accountable for it. I, I believe that if you send it to the entities and they don't know that it goes to operational or these other there's debt fund, there's ed tech. They're not, so when I, they sent me in, I think it's in June or July, oddity, and I don't have that on there. Because it won't, it won't come through our office if you choose just to pay those three. And you're going to have them end up sending that check back. So if you want to do it properly, agree to pay it back, the adjustment goes through the treasurer's office, the taxural changes are done. When the managers gives me a check, we post it like the taxpayer paid it at the end of the month. It'll get distributed to nineteen's taxes.
Thank you.
I understand we're not, if you want to come down, I can show you the taxural changes.
I believe you, I just.
And show you how it's paid in every one of the accounts I know of. Or Jenny was saying she wanted proof. I can't show proof until I pay it and it gets distributed. And still then, we recollect to quite a bit of money. Now we're in our second half taxes, so we're busy, so. Um, it's not, I mean, I could go to nineteen's, but if other people are paid nineteen's, it's not just going to specify, it's going to show everybody's.
Thank you.
You can check with the schools, but I'm, I'm thinking they, they're going to want a proper paper trail also.
I have a question for June, County Attorney. Does it stand from a legal standpoint, when we pay back affected entities, if we don't pay back the state and the county, does that open us up for any kind of legality issues?
Uh, good morning, Chairman. I think, you know, the purpose of this matter is making sure that, you know, we want to clean out the, the pay that issue with respective entities. But the issue in this matter is related to the mill levy and, you know, which involve the DFA and, and the county as well. So I believe that based upon, you know, hearing from Madame Treasurer and, you know, Jonah, it seems to be that the, the county and state levy, you know, amount can be related to the total payout by entities. If that's the case, we need to make a call, make sure, we want to make sure that the, you know, clean out the, this payout issue by these entities. There was state and county levy amount appropriate, you know, proportion to this payout by entities should be also made. Is that the, I think that's what Madame Treasurer was talking about. I believe it may be consistent with the, you know, the current statute relating to the DFA of the mill levy issues.
It's going to be a basic question, although you're paying, you're going to get your money back.
I don't, I just, I, I don't, I understand it's just paperwork for us. I just didn't want to pay the state anybody too than have to because we've paid up enough time. But if that's what we have to do, that's what we have to do.
But again, I said, stop. When we pay, we have to pay it off.
I get it now, I just didn't understand that. I didn't understand that before. It's a limitation of the system.
A lot of taxpayers that come in and they say, I'm not paying, you have to pay, and the software takes it. I can't, I can't tell the software what, what to do.
So I'll entertain a motion to make whole all entities.
So.
One more second.
I'll second.
Mr. Kern, you have permission.
Yes.
Yes. Item seventeen, discussion action cancellation, RFP twenty-three dash one, least one ten greater.
Good morning, Commissioners. Um, so item seventeen and eighteen kind of go together. We asked for permission to go out for bid for a lease on a crater. However, when we did our bid opening, we did not have anybody that was eligible for it. Both parties were, they failed to report that they were required to. So we're asking you to go back out for bid for that. Or asking to cancel the initial bid and re-bid.
Mr. Kern.
No questions. So move. Second.
Thank you.
Mr. Kern.
Yes.
Mr. Kern.
Yes.
Chairman.
Yes. So moving on to item eighteen, discussion action, RFP twenty-three dash oh one R, least one ten greater department. Special.
This, this both was seventeen, both was seventeen, so now I'm asking somebody to cancel it, can I go out for bidding again?
Question.
Yes.
Did any specs or anything change?
Nothing changed, everything's exactly the same.
Thank you.
So when I put this stuff in our system, I can't add a letter. It's got, we have to have a different number. So it should be twenty-three dash zero two. Just for the next one.
Is it possible for me to go and change the negative two to sign today? Is that, or is that?
But it's just a.
It's a Jim question because it's already on the agenda, sorry. And published.
Sorry.
June.
Sorry, I could not hear, you know, the question posed. Can you repeat that question again, sir?
The question refers to the RFP twenty-three dash oh one, it says R, Department of County Clerk. The system is not able to register a letter, so they have to change that to a number two. Maybe three, three and one and four.
Okay.
Is it legal to change those now since agenda's already been approved?
Uh, I, I believe that the, the letter can be changed, subject to the approval from the commissioners.
So what number do you want to use?
Um, so number eighteen, I will change it to the twenty-three dash zero three.
So I make a motion to amend the resolution to twenty-twoy-three dash zero three.
I heard the beep.
RFP, I'm sorry. Oh, sorry. Request for bid. Second. Second.
Mr. Kern.
Yes.
Question.
Yes. And we need a motion on the amended.
So. RFP twenty-three dash three, least one ten greater department.
So. Second.
Thank you. Second half clerk.
Commissioner Kern.
Yes.
Commissioner.
Yes.
Chairman.
Yes.
Moving on to item nineteen, discussion action, item cancellation, RFP twenty-three dash two, these two new wheel rollers.
And again, the same thing happened with this one. We went out for bid on the same day, both contractors that were here. Also forgot to sign the same paper on these bids. We did have a third bid, but they did not meet our specs. So I'm asking to cancel that and then go out for bid again. And also again, nothing to change first, we have to do the same.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to cancel the RFP twenty-three dash two, these two next two new wheel rollers.
So move.
Second, second. So move second half clerk.
Commissioner Kern. Yes. Commissioner.
Yes.
Chairman.
Yes. And the twenty, discussion action, RFP twenty-three dash zero two, R, these two new wheel rollers for the road department.
So this one again will correlate with number nineteen, since we're canceling it. And then we will, since that we can't use the R, we'll ask to change this with a twenty-twoy-three dash zero four.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we amend RFP twenty-twoy-three dash oh two R to be RFP twenty-twoy-three dash oh four.
Thank you, Commissioner. You have a second.
Second.
Second half clerk.
Commissioner Kern.
Yes.
Commissioner.
Yes.
Chairman.
Yes. So now we will vote on RFP twenty-three dash four, these two new wheel rollers for the road department.
So.
Second. So moving second half clerk.
Mr. Kern.
Yes.
Commissioner.
Yes.
Yes. Pass item twenty-one, special action, task order number six, multiple organ engineering services of the Bartlett subdivision D.
So, would this task order appear as asking for permission to go ahead and look forward, wait, to go ahead and start the project of. Paying to Bartlett subdivision with the road department.
Thank you for that. It's my understanding, this is funny to come in from a head and a D O T grant. Uh, this is actually gonna be affecting my district of District One, uh, so it's exciting to finish up some third roads that are out there. Uh, the intention is to pave North Mesa Road, South Mesa Road, and South Platte Road. This is for a little bit of information, uh, some special questions.
So this is, uh, Mr. Chairman, this is just the engineering services.
Um, we already have a contract of engineering services, so we're just asking if we can go ahead and do the, do the project.
So, this is most important engineering services. Shouldn't we be, I mean, most of Corbin's not doing the paving.
No, they're not.
So shouldn't this motion be to approve the vendor concerning the paving?
And then go up, yeah. Have we gone up to bid for?
I apologize, it is to ask for the engineering, sorry, I've never done the task before.
So this is just engineering.
Excellent.
Uh.
Can I tell you more questions?
Uh, the question is, do we have a approximate, is this gonna be under sixty thousand dollars?
No.
Um, the prices of the package, seventy thousand.
But because they're at our. Home calling, you know, that's what I did.
So I'll entertain a motion to accept task order number six, multiple organ engineering services to Bartlett subdivision D.
So move, second.
So moving second, clerk.
Mr. Kirk.
Mr. Kirk.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Item number twenty-two, discussion action, Arca Funds Generator, Dan County Peter.
Mark, turn the conversation space and down. Um. There should be quoting their packet from the exhibition, which is, uh, the contract, uh, these were updated quotes, uh, that we got. Last year, we updated this year for the generators on Green Mountain, which is. Because us and the fire department, the violation from the use of power. This, the cost of, uh, generators, one hundred sixty-six thousand three hundred eighty-three. And six cents for that site. Which again will help on public safety, uh, the fire, the sheriff's office. Um, for that site. There are also two other quotes, one of them for a repeater for the contention time, when the expansion. Up there, that building with the added metal concrete. Uh, law enforcement, the fire, the dispatch center, or the emergency service that we do. Uh, communications to dispatch, uh, the doctor, uh, for bike transport inmates and so forth. Next quote is another repeater for the springer location, uh, to replace a repeater that is seven years old. That is coming towards end of life, which we have more recent problems with, uh, over the last couple of years, we have. Uh, possibly repeaters, uh, some of these departments, uh, these departments, all the contention, uh, useless system. Um, with that total cost, uh, part of that is a hundred and eighty-seven thousand three hundred and one, seventy-six cents. Uh, after looking at capital, I mean, ultimately, it was fifty thousand dollars to purchase the repeater. Why else? So now we also. Just temporary questions. So, Mr. Chair, uh, Eric Parker, you said fifty thousand from capital?
Yes.
But we had a hundred thousand from capital, that was caught along with vehicles that we were supposed to get. That's not what Representative Sanchez told me, he said that we're getting the vehicle for sheriff's office and a hundred thousand. I actually talked to him a couple of weeks ago, and I kept not giving him the job. I don't know what happened. At that point, we should have known that. So I had long discussions with him about it. That is what he promised us, seven eight thousand dollars for the repeater's system. And a vehicle for the sheriff's office, I think I have it in writing.
I do too, actually, I have a text message as well.
And he didn't give you an explanation as to why he.
No, sir, he said he was actually gonna check into it, call me back, and I did not receive the phone call back.
Uh, Mr. Kirk. Sure, I don't have any, uh. Mr. Chairman, I do have one more question. So, uh, and this is really for our fire marshal, does this? Cause I know you had some concerns as well, Nick, about the repeaters on Green Mountain in relation to the fire department. Is, is this gonna solve all of our issues with that repeater, are we still gonna have issues to we?
This is gonna greatly benefit, you know, the, all the departments as a whole, uh, having this, uh, generator backup is key. We've had constant issues with electrical, uh, lines going up the mountain. Sure. And constantly lose some power up there, so this, this is gonna be very beneficial to us. Uh, what we've done to mitigate it right now is we're actually in the state side, because they do have this, uh, generator already as a backup at their side. So as soon as we get this completed, we're gonna move back over to our, our facility and. Yes, this is, this is great, we need this taken care of as soon as possible.
Okay, but you don't have any additional needs, like you don't need a new repeater or anything, cause I was having the impression you did.
Well, we're working on trying to combine all our repeaters into one system. And, uh, right now, we've got the new equipment up on Eagle Tail, but we're getting held up now with a tower. The tower belongs to the city of Rattone, but it requires maintenance, about forty-two thousand dollars worth of maintenance with, with our last, uh, quote. So we're kind of in a stalled position there to, to work with that tone and see if we can, I'm gonna get that facilitated. But this is a totally completely different, uh.
Totally different initiative.
Yes, so it is, yes, completely different, but we're working on that and doing our best to get funding for that as well.
Well, we just gave the city of Rattone ten acres of land, can we use that as leverage to get them to fix the tower?
We're actually working with the local electric department to go there and see if they can help mitigate some of that cost, because, you know, we're pulling a power company out of. The costs are outrageous, but if we can get our local guys to, to put in some new guy wires and stuff, we're hoping to save some money there, so we're working on it. I had a question, man, just, I know this is. But do we need, are there kind of any other things to that tower? No, we, we just shared that facility, we actually provided them with a brand new, uh, not brand new, brand new huge, uh, comic box building up there, because the building they had was. Was falling down and was in bad shape, so, uh, I mean, we worked really close with Rattone, we've got a good partnership, so no problems there. Thank you.
Oh, I'll take that on.
So, uh, going to, when we're back to the Arca Funds, uh, take your questions, Mr. Kirk.
I have no questions, thank you.
Thank you all, uh, so I'll entertain a motion to. Spend the rest of the Arca Funds for a generator.
Rest of them, well. I'm not sure how much is that. Over the grant, it'd be roughly a hundred and thirty-seven thousand three hundred. Three hundred one dollars and seventy-six cents.
Thank you. Uh, I'll make the, you repeat the amount, should it?
Uh, it's a hundred and thirty-seven thousand three hundred and one. Seventy-six cents.
I'll entertain a question.
So move, second.
Mr. Kirk.
Yes.
Commissioner.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. So moving on to item twenty-three, discussion of the updates. That's actually, I guess I'll just start. Um, so, uh, first off, I've been working with ID, which is a printing company that's taken over much of all for all. Background checks that we use for, uh, accounting, but it's also a service that will be offered to all the public, uh, help maximum. More accounting, council county, uh, will be, uh, I believe be on the side currently in that northeast. Uh, we have train scheduled to start that function. Uh, actually, the equipment will arrive on May sixteenth, which was all provided by the company, there is no expense to the camera. Uh, all we have to do is provide a six by six space in our office. Uh, also, by management, it's the assistance in getting that space ready to, for this equipment. Uh, that will be installed on May sixteenth. Uh, we start the training, the afternoon of the sixteenth, and we'll, uh, do that training on the eighteenth. We'll provide that, uh, service starting on Monday, twenty-second. I don't know, I, I talked to one stage, you're gonna have to pre-set up an account to see the background checks. I've got mine set up already, so that process should stay relatively stable as we've been working it. They will be providing the, uh, I made on the number, they're gonna handle all of the scheduling. They're gonna handle everything and then just provide us a, a list of whatever applicants are coming in that day. Hours of operations for this will be Mondays, from nine AM to four PM, Monday to Thursday, that's a special holiday. But they will have a scheduling, they will have a lot of customer shows, uh, none of that will be taken on by our staff, the show staff. With every individual that we print, that will be four or less than two. So, that is, that's something we've been working on, right? Uh, undersheriff, undersheriff Montoya, past colleague, uh, by year half ago, was going to be. Uh, added to the fallen officer memorial in Santa Fe on the twenty-third, uh, it was a dedication, right? Uh, this also added to the National Law Enforcement Wall, Washington DC last year, period of fires, unfortunately, related to the fires. Uh, I have two W's that will be graduating the academy on the twenty-fifth. Two W's that are currently in training that will be coming out of the program on December seventh, so we'll be hit to. The summer will have fourteen of us, including myself, uh, but still two big. Uh, we did interview yesterday, uh. We tested one individual yesterday, uh, I can get out with the stacker, unfortunately, to get into the academy. Uh, we have another one that was coming out from New York City, just. Backs the areas, hopefully, hopefully. Or one, we have now. I've been working with maintenance with Fred, we've been having a lot of problems with air conditioning out of judicial center. I just noticed a new sensor or some kind of module that went out, which I don't understand all that stuff, but all I know is it's not working. Some of the courtrooms and some of the offices on the east side of the building are excessively by the magnitude, not like the last one that's taken out there. Uh, they were able to come up and they tried to bypass that center to get the, the air conditioner to work. However, it did that, that caused the fender issues, and so they had to shut the system down, like it was a big foul report. I just don't know when it's gonna be here to get that itself, so, uh, that is ongoing. That's numbers for you. So we responded over the last four months, we got eighty-six nine hundred miles that we responded to. Uh. We've had. Four hundred and sixteen document attempts, four hundred and forty-three completed services. Um, which is all a simple process that we do for the courts and also other individuals, other attorneys, uh, other folks and stuff serve. We have, uh. Issued about four hundred citations with an additional one thousand forty, that's also a production. A grant that we received through NESA for D W Y enforcement. We have fifty-five transports for this quarter and have transported, uh, transport mileage is ten thousand five hundred and six. Uh, to date, we have, we work with people, there are a bunch of transport vehicles to buy a dump of our other vehicles. That vehicle was already sixteen thousand miles, we got it in six months. With the, uh, floor that the judicial district has put in place, we're still training. At about fifty-five percent increase in our transport and about thirty percent. So that's, that's some of what's going on with the sheriff's office, and we're on our, our maintenance. As far as tires and brakes, and now they're also taking a toll on our, like vehicles. With Michael Pearson waiting to see when they get parts to move there, that's been the biggest issue, it's been out of service for a couple of months. And they're staying at parts, we can't find vendors for whatever, yeah. Part of that supply chain issue. That's all I have. Other questions? Mr. Harrison.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Sheriff Parker, is it possible for us to get copies of those reports, at least the ones where you're showing your calls and everything? Yeah, if you could provide us with that, I'd appreciate that.
Is it? Uh, I just have two questions, you know, if the south gate of the. Port House of late, is that fixed? Yes, they did get it fixed, uh, and they actually ordered an extra part, so we have it, in case it goes down again, I guess they're, uh, drama. Uh, and the way they have the chain adjusted from the last time that wore them, so we've got to come up with a.
Thank you.
My next question, those are fingerprints, another, yes, probably their child identification, but I guess it's not a picture. So if your kid goes missing, there's a whole picture, fingerprints, all this information, uh. This is something that the sheriff's office can do. Is that what we can assist them, I know they can write books with cards and all that stuff.
They have the books.
I'm not sure, I haven't been there very long, that would be a question for Debbie, your person.
Typically, what's done is it's a whole book where you attach a picture, we fill out all the, like, and wire. We're happy to sell all the fingerprints.
Yeah.
But I have every piece of it, we'll assist, this is a digital.
Sure.
But yeah, if there's anything to be helpful.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Important to have. Thank you, Sheriff. One more question. Thank you. So aren't the, Mr. Chairman, aren't the, uh, elected officials required to give a report, or? It, I mean, isn't there, is that a policy or a statute or what?
I'm for this statement, it's a request.
I'll give mine too, I give you guys something to write.
Yeah.
So, um.
So we've been pretty steady in the office with documents, recordings. Recorded over a thousand, a thousand eight nights that we've recorded in this last quarter. I actually went from January first to April here. We've been pretty steady with the probates helping the probate judge out. Can this probably is completed? We've attended the commission meetings and prepared minutes. Thank you guys for giving back to me when I submitted those to you guys. We are conducting two all male in ballot elections, one for the Maxwell School District for. Bond and real one for the South Central Hospital District. That is a continuation of their current funding. We did fill the vacancy in our office with Tracy Hernandez. She's catching up and helping out quite a bit with checking of the documents in our office. I've gone. I, along with Sarah and the staff, we've been checking our books to make sure, to see if there's anything that we can cut out on the scanning to save a little bit of the hard funds as well. Our records are solid from our land records are solid from the twenty twelve forward. So we're hoping that we can just upload those documents to the system. And then we are currently working on American license books to make sure that they are solid as well. So we can save some money on the. Digitizing the records.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Both commissioners and questions? You know, I, I agree. I think I'd like to also hear from the assessor and treasurer on quarterly. Yeah, I mean, it was requested as far as I get. Sustaining request. I, I will make this request. I know. Department heads are here. We had some stuff. That's quarterly update and also from the assessor's office. So one of the things I would like to see from the assessors is their appraisal plan. Also how the profit evaluation. Play with with the appraisal, appraisal plan. The extra funded question for their cracers. And managers and any other quarterly updates.
Mister Chairman, commissioners, ladies and gentlemen, we'll get started this morning with a few little updates. Right now working with Brenna Valley and our insurance company trying to get estimate vehicle replaced. We had a slight accident up in the canyon during this past winter. It was icy. He hit a color, pretty much totaled his vehicle. I mean, he ripped out the rear end of the pickup. Like we discussed earlier, parts are just a bear to get. So insurance felt it was probably best just to go ahead and total this vehicle. We've been lucky enough to find one locally here in Rato. We'll be able to purchase it off the CES contracts. We're working on actively getting that truck replaced for him. Also working with the departments on a grant for the volunteers. It's for recruitment and retention. So I received twenty five thousand dollars. We got to split it approximately between a hundred volunteers that are eligible for it. It's not going to go very far, but a little bit is better than nothing. So kudos to all the volunteers for getting a little cash in pockets. Also help with the departments with their budgets and getting their applications submitted for the state fire funding for the twenty three, twenty four fiscal year. Got all that submitted if you go there. Currently, all our departments are conducting power, annual NFPA home hose and ladder testing. All that's taken place last week, this week. So we'll be in compliance with the state there. Working on a wildland coordinator grant with Suzie John and Mister Borg. We're helping to improve our wildlife capacity in the county as well as the state. The grant was given to us. I think there's seven other counties that receive the same grant. I think it's, it's going to help benefit our capacity to outgrow our wildland department. Make our departments better. That's a great. We received a donation of a classic pumper from Eddie County. We're waiting for DFA approval to finalize that, that appeal there and replacing it at the remaining fire station. It'll be replacing the nineteen eighty four truck. That is definitely needs replacing. So kudos to Eddie County for donating that to us. Let's see. Working with our local architect on the training and admin building down by the event center. We've got kind of the location we kind of picked. We're just now finalizing the paperwork. Hopefully, we can start doing some ground testing and move forward on that project as well. Also working with our, our local architect on the airport fire station, trying to get the final FAA approval to move forward on that. We're still fighting that battle. Been fighting this a long time, but it's finally going to come to fruition. Black Lake Fire Station is still kind of on hold. We're waiting for a possible land swap that would allow us to greatly improve the site location. Where we have the property now, it's, it's kind of an being. It'll take quite a bit of work to get the access to the main highway. So if we can make this land swap work, it would definitely be beneficial for our fire department there. We currently have several fire trucks out on order. We've got a class A pumper from Reno Valley. We've got a class A pumper for rapid response. We've got a three thousand gallon water tender for Farley and a class A pumper for Miami. All four of these units were. Three hundred thousand dollars, eight grants. Each department has enough money to, to finish funding the rest of that purchase. So we do not have to go out for any loans, which is great. We've also got two wildland trucks for Farley that are about ninety five percent complete. We hope to have those delivered within the next couple of weeks. And then we've also got some new wildland trucks on work. One for Bermano, two for Brenna Valley and one for Farley. And those, that makes three for Farley total when it's all completed. And so we're actually spending quite a bit of money, but we're getting a lot of good equipment into the county and making things better for our citizens. I'm open to any questions. Tell us now.
Nick, do we have any of our team down in Guadalajara?
I wasn't contacting Bruce last night. He was, he was watching it closely, but we're far enough away that, you know, all we can do is just kind of keep an eye on it. Those call comes in. We'll take care of that one. He's right. Right now, State Forest has a pretty good handle on it. They've got quite a few volunteers down in that area to help with that error.
Yeah, one question. Nick, where's the funding for the training admin centers that you're talking about?
That's going to come through state fire funds. I've been approved through State Fire Marshal's Office for that. So we're just starting to slowly move forward with that project.
Mister Chairman. Commissioner Kern's commenting, maybe think of something else. One of the things that has been discussed, I don't think any action has been taken that. That I'm aware of, but is on that event center is to set it up so that we both can have a motocross area and a road area that are different so that we're not having to rework the dirt every year. Is your training center going to impact that at all?
Negative, this would be up in Far Northeast quarter.
Far Northeast.
Yeah, the, the plan is to bring some drawings and all that, you know, when we get to that point to kind of show you guys what's going on and what it's going to look like. We're still in the very early stages and, you know, just in the design stage and we want to bring something that's presentable to you guys near, near future. Thank you, Mister. I was told one, one last thing. We've got our, on that wildland coordinator position, we've got probably a set of, I guess. The regulations to follow that grant will be presenting a job description and stuff to you guys here in the near future. So please be looking for that. We're looking to move forward on that as soon as possible. So see that in the back and hopefully this next meeting.
Thank you very much. Again, I do have a great thing on the. So I, I believe that the event center is accepted. So one thing I'd like to take in consideration is, is maybe if we have to upgrade that from your office, maybe we could upgrade a huge subject to justify it. Or maybe even bring in city line. To handle that base from your office to the event center and any kind of future projects.
And going along with that, Mister Chairman, when we went out. We'd actually been on the twenty seventh and looked at the event center for pretty good restrooms and stuff like that. With my pro lines, so they were actually working on the cost estimates and kind of designing a plan for us at this time. And up until that time, we'd actually. The chief of maintenance department, they felt we were actually hooked up to some water in city sort. And in looking into that a little closer, we found out that we weren't. Yeah, so we're looking at exactly that one to be the most, because that's a huge center and to be honest, it probably. Probably isn't the best plan. So we're currently looking into that as well. And then the other thing, prior to that, Glenn, the Fire Marshal and I had actually. Really looked at the placement of this fire train facility. I think all of us agree that where we put it now is exactly the place that it needs to be. Prior to that, it was actually on top of Glenn's main pit. And so that would have. Could tell him using that pit. So once again, I think we made a good decision on that.
Thank you. Mister Lito.
Mister Jerry Christian. Come to you again. A quick update on Los Cocos to answer this specific question. Currently, they have rigs go by the. Buena Vista, Moras, Sierra Alameda. As far as local units on scene as well as the Vegas engine and Santa Fe hot shots. Total about seven engines, those are about forty percent up. Currently, they're still calling it a hundred acres with thirty percent containment. It's fantastic. The winds they're seeing right now are steady northwest eight mile per hour with the gust of fifteen. And the humidity stayed at fourteen percent. So that's pretty good news. Double digit humidity is always better than single digit. And the winds are staying fairly light. No need to call on any air cooking in, but with thirty percent containment already, things are looking pretty good. As far as last quarter, spent a lot of time out of town, going to some conferences. It's conference time. One was Southwest Coordination Center, which is the entity overseeing wildfire response amongst federal and state entities for basically Mexico and Arizona, parts of Texas, Oklahoma, or who did that as well. So attended that conference, a lot of good information. There's actually. A lot of ways they're going to change the way they're doing business. Both locally and nationally as far as wildfire response. So I've got a lot of good information on how that's going to. Real briefly, I can cover it is they're moving to. A more structured incident management response. They're calling it complex incident management, but through the past, you know, as the fire grew in size, you order up a type three team. And then if it got bigger, you ordered up a type two team, which is a larger entity and then a type one team, another larger entity. Every time you do that, of course, number one, it's costing tens of thousands of dollars to switch out teams. But also you have that lag as things are being handed over. Folks are quickly having to learn their new jobs as they step in on the fire. So under complex incident management, it follows under true incident management principles of being fully scalable. So instead, as it progresses to the future, you're going to see more likely you order a complex incident management team. They start on fire and as that fire grows, they just bring in more personnel without switching out the existing personnel. So it's an interesting model. There's, there's going to be hiccups, but we'll see how it plays out. I'm cautiously hopeful, but it should, it should streamline a lot more of the stuff we saw. Giving the example of Perma Speed Cafe King. You had a total of, of. Eight total team transitions throughout the entire summer. Some of those were returning teams, but every time one of those happened at twenty four to forty eight hours of. A little bit more confusion than running more streamlined operations. Also attended a partners in preparedness conference with Mexico Department of Health. Honestly, it was a lot more patting on the back for COVID than I really cared for, especially since I have some disagreements on some of the things we did. But good information coming through as far as future preparedness and working to build up some of those larger relationships between county, local entities and the state. And then also tend forward with. The floodplain, trying to maintain some life of continuing education credits for floodplain. I could have one or two more come, so I'm looking at the future from the month of the past. And that's going to be dependent on what's happening around here. So I'm going to try to stay flexible with that. Kind of the major focus I've had this last quarter and this next quarter is seeing a huge amount of turnover with both the Mexico Department of Health and Mexico Homeland Security. I'm talking massive. All branding names. Honestly, some of the names I'm not bothering to learn until they compare every six months. Because even from the end of last fire season, some of those people, a lot of those walked away. Even those names. So with that changing in personnel, it basically is creation of new relationships, which is kind of the whole crux of my job, is having those relationships with state federal partners. So that's been my focus this last quarter and coming into the next quarter is trying to spend a lot of time telephone or in person with these new folks. Establishing, building up the trust so that way if we have something coming in the future that we already have those. Those friendships in place. And then, of course, it's stand by, stand by. Like I said, it's wildfire season. So keep a good watch on what's going on. As far as shelter preparedness. We do still have the basically two hundred vets, which are the federal vets. Those are available to us to use unless the vets call for a way. As far as retro convention center, we already have about three hundred beds there that are combination owned by City of Raton and also Red Cross. Then I have probably about two dozen Red Cross beds that are over in Eagle Nest as well. You utilize before we set up the Eagle National. But I'm looking at the future of expanding our capability involving that. One of the things that we'll have to keep in mind as we build this. Is usage of a snowing, you know, we don't really control a lot throughout the county. Basically here in Rato, we don't have any facilities. It's possibility of the event center, if it gets fixed up someday, could be a potential site. But in the meantime, the convention center, we do have those, which are in accordance with the City of Raton for usage of the convention center. And it really is a prime location as far as keeping folks from town. There are some difficulties with those roads, but long term, I think that's sustainable. Over in Eagle Nest, of course, we have the community center there, the senior center, which is a great location. We have that partnership established. In Angel Fire, we have a community center there. There's some difficulty there because of accessibility with the weather. Of course, if looking at fire season, that's not so much of an issue. But there are a whole lot of other options in Angel Fire and really kind of the big plan, especially with wildfire is getting folks out of here. And that's why concentration is really going to be on the City of Raton Convention Center. As far as any wildfire evacuations in Gulfax County, that's going to be really the priority to do that. Because we have the infrastructure in place, we have the size of the facility and the supportive community. Even looking at last year, you know, there's talk about adding a shelter in Simran. There's difficulty if it's school, because the school is in, because that's basically our location available there. But also the supporting infrastructure. There aren't the restaurants to support feeding of that many people inside Simran. And really, if you start talking about adding three hundred people in an evacuation center in a, in a city of twelve hundred people, that's, that's a big ask. And so really it's looking more at that reasonable picture as far as wildfire coordination. And then, of course, talking with the state as far as, again, major wildfire evacuations. Of course, the state model last year was the centers in. In Glorietta, Santa Fe, Taus, Peniasco. And that focus was again on accessibility, especially accessibility of the supply routes. Because the main bulk of supplies are coming from Y twenty five from out per San Jose. And we were looking at potential cutoff of access. I twenty five was potentially going to be cut off at one point. Two eighty five was potentially going to be cut off at one point. And so the access of supplies shipping up to those facilities, that's why, one of the reasons why the Rattell Center didn't really make a lot of sense. We didn't get a lot of support from the state on that. But again, it's also a smoke condition as well, trying to get people up with any major smoke. And as we saw here last year in Rattell, we even had some smoke days here and then, of course, the rest of the county. So that's kind of where I'm at right now.
Not really a question, Mr. Chairman, but, you know, last year when we had the fires, the people that evacuated from Colfax County and the people that evacuated from whatever more county predominantly went to Taus. And so I guess, even though it's not in Colfax County, if that's a location that makes more sense, because what I learned talking with the people that were evacuated is they wanted to be as close to their home as possible. And that was the challenge with Rattell is that it was just viewed as too far away, so they went to Taus instead. And maybe we need some JPA or something with Dallas. I don't know. Maybe that all worked out. But it just seems like if the fire is going to be in the southwest part of the county, a more logical place for people to go is Taus as opposed to.
Yeah, we do have those agreements already in place, so that's to be I S system industry state related, and that's coordinated through the Mexican H S.
Mr. Stevens.
Transportation project. Of course, the Department of Business subdivision, Peter Bucker. And since the commissions hopefully will start in the fall as possible. Our own business subdivision, Picking Project. The total budget cost of that project is eight hundred ninety-nine thousand nine hundred fifty-three dollars and sixty cents. The state percentage, the state is paying up to ninety-five percent. And the town is the, is paying the five percent. Comes up to forty-four thousand nine hundred ninety-seven dollars and sixty cents. This project, although it's allocated funds, must be settled by June thirty of twenty twenty-five. An update on that project. We do have the Blosser Gap Bridge project. I apologize that I cannot bring the area for that project. What I can tell you is the first part of February, the update that I had received. Kind of been, I was hoping to have an update today, but we've been kind of playing phone tag between my pro lines and what. But the first part of February, they were sixty-five percent design on the multi-plex that they're going to put in. And they projected to start, start construction on it in late April. So by having got a few some on tape on that. We can have three gravel projects. We're hoping to get done as soon as possible. We have two, two roads in the Knoxville area. County Road Eight-One and County Road Eight-Four. And then we have the next gravel project with the, the Kaiba area, County Road Eight-Fourteen, tiny mountain road. And then the third gravel project is in the Farley area on C forty-four, which is a road runner. Here lately, the, the food's been fixing and cleaning a lot on the Calvert's, kind of give a jump on our, on our Calvert during this time of year. We, we try to, to do all the caliber we can. We've had a few calls in the Farley area. We got a pretty good jump on fixing and in the Calvert's in that area. The Miami area. A few calls down there. As winter was tapering off and the snow was, when it wasn't snowing and the weather was halfway decent, we just kind of picked the best weather day to go out. Last good rain that we had, the blade operator took the big advantage of trying to get a lot of the roads bladed. It sure helps only how it's the moisture, of course, to plate the roads. And it puts the material back on the road to help them out. As of right now, my level of position I have would help me for an operator right now. And as far as my administrative assistant, we're just, as far as I know, waiting for the fingerprint.
Just a question about the Blosser Gap. Is there an expiration on those funds on your, because I've been sitting out there for a while.
I believe that's the same of June thirty of two thousand twenty-five.
Because if they haven't even finished designing, by the time we go out to bid. Yeah, we need to push them on that.
Yep, absolutely. And we have, in fact, yesterday, we have to repair the whole of Mount Ridge multiple times. It's the first pre-ear of, I mean, we have to go off now.
Were we able to get a little bit of an ease? When I know where you were looking at, at one point in time, looking at a little bit of a ease, we changed there of more ranch. We're able to, to that or is that?
I am, I'm not sure how they got that update from.
Yeah, it wasn't very much, but I just wondered because that since Ms. Moore has passed away, that's changed. Okay, thank you.
Glenn, just want to thank you again. I know I think this administrator's position is really going to benefit you. Hopefully you can get the things that's squared away, have her there to help you kind of manage all these different projects and things like that. But we did have a difficult plan, and I just want to thank you for trying to count those and exactly what you should be doing at the same time taking care of the airport. And I know we used a lot of overtime, weekends and stuff like that. So, thank you very much.
Mr. County Manager, or is there anything else which can be done?
Sure.
Next item.
Well, I can give a quick report just on the manager's office.
Do you mind covering that?
Okay, I can certainly do that.
Thank you. So we'll go ahead and move on to, I don't know, the four commissioners document.
Yeah, on this Thursday, May eleventh, Connecticut Mexico is going to be meeting in Springer to talk about broadband usage. When I looked last Wednesday, there was nobody from Colfax County registered to in that meeting, so I don't know if people will care about. But all the other counties in our district are registered.
No, I just have one question. Last, the audit company gave us hard copies for all the commissioners. Did they provide those or?
They have not yet. As soon as they get it to you, I'm not sure they'll give you a hard copy if they give you a bunch of it. But I may make sure this is for those two.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner. I was just going to give an update on a few things here. We're in the process of wrapping up the tiger graph. There's one thing I'd like to test the county manager with in our IT on our website. I'd like to see county-supported organizations and maybe even what we give them or what's of like and kind. Because there's organizations that the county and the people, constituents need to know that we support and that they're there if they need their assistance. So the guest program, the visiting senior companions, et cetera. So if you could work on that, I appreciate it. Also, the congressional directed spending. I mentioned that briefly last time, so it is, both of my requests have, have left Senator Luman's office and now gone to the Senate Propriations Committee. And it's going to be under the subcommittee for the agricultural rural development, food administration, food and drug administration. So I was going to ask my fellow commissioners and any other constituents, like the officials, if you'd please reach out to Martin Heinrich, he's actually the chair of that board, and say you support the congressional direct spending for Colfax County. Much appreciated. I'm going to be reaching out to him and a few other elected officials as well as some of our Colorado delegation on the federal side to ask their support because of free benefit, we're right on Colorado border, cross out this county, also conflict from some of its congressional direct spending. Me and the county manager met yesterday with Scott Berry as part of my continuation to collaborate, work with our other entities, villages, towns. We went out and just had a lot of discussion, went out, checked out the projects, the buildings, pavement millions from highway and everything else. It's very interesting work that they're doing, the county side, maybe down the road. And our road manager, Glenn Stevens, also went out there and checked out their progress. So it's, it's very interesting. I was going to ask the county manager if he could give an update on the state aviation conference, EV chargers Martin Chavez, I know our deadline, their deadline is May thirty. Also, I wanted to state that our next budget hearing is going to be this next Tuesday. And another thing, two other items is one is for Commissioner Weir, us thinking hearing the emergency services and evacuation point, I agree with you on that. I don't want to be evacuated. I live in Angel Fire almost, it's coming back to me. At all. I want to be near, but I get updates and everything else. I thought of this prior, but maybe in that center for the county that would be up there, Miranda Valley, that we could use as an evacuation point. I'm not sure, it had to be discussed with fire emergency. And maybe we could use some of the land of the airport to support that. Just to run it out there. And then the last slide I had is, I was going to see if the Rogers Tax Board would have an interest in up there land that the county owns, the old, the Mason Air Truck field. And I know I didn't ask for the county to clean it up and make it more presentable. But on that side, I think it'd be kind of nice to have a mural supporting collaboration between Rock Town and Colfax County showing that we have a lot of people go out there, take pictures, they hold special events out there. So I was thinking it'd be cool to show a collaboration of saying, you know, Rattell and Colfax County working together to put this out there. I'm just saying, paint the side of that, on the north side of that anger, maybe, just throwing it out there for an idea. That is, that is all I had.
Yeah, thank you. One other thing, I've been approached by a couple of different individuals, if it would be possible to add a tab in our, on our website that would consist of four packet and of non, you know, obviously nonsensitive material, including the budget or, you know, the treasury report, any of these agreements and that, because I think it would help add a lot of transparency as well as provide information to the public on what we're actually taking action on without having to take up a tremendous amount of time during our meetings and allow for more input.
Support. Commissioner Colonel, that's a great idea. And I think challenges we have is to issue an agenda. And then the agenda is not always descriptive. It may mean something to us because we're working with the county on a daily basis. But our constituents don't know what the issues are. And plus, you know, they never get to see in a lot of cases the detail that backs up an agenda item and they get it. A lot of times, we do our homework. This commission does a fairly good job, in my opinion, of doing their homework before they come to the meeting. So you're not learning a lot of things in the meeting, which is the right way to do it. The negative side of that is our constituents don't get to hear the inside information that we have. So I would full support publicizing the the packet information so that the public would have access to it.
One other thing I think would be good as well, you know, and I noticed in the assessors report, she had different things about, you know, their appraisal policies. And that, I think it would be a good thing to have a tab as well that included our policies, you know, our personnel policy, those policies. You know, any, any, basically any policy that the commission is adopted so that that is their click as well. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Stevens, anything more? So you're going to move on to item five, manager's document.
And you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner. Right now, the manager's office, we are full staff and we have a cross-training so that if somebody gets sick or that somebody can actually fill in those positions. As you're where Virginia Tabitha, or I'm sort of tied to chairman now, and Virginia is our chief chairman officer, and I think we've done a good job in that. One of the things that we have been very busy with at this particular time, and I do see that a lot, but we have been doing a lot of requests and responding to those. And that was pretty fine and staff intensive, so let's see us kind of getting through that. I guess what we'll call the solid waste challenge of twenty-two, twenty-three. We're getting ahead of that. Everybody's been there. We had Tri-State sell to another seller business with some other folks, and we had a lot of challenges with trash, solid waste not getting picked up. And I just talked with Tiana today. She's out in the field as we speak. But it seems like a lot of those issues have been corrected. It's like dumpsters would be picked up twice a week now because they should be on the contract. We're still working with Tri-State, monitoring them, cleaning up the areas and stuff like that. But for the most part, Tri-State did get a new vehicle. They have been able to hire drivers and stuff like that. So once again, I think we got through that process okay. It's good, I think, Virginia and a fantastic job in working citizens and looking to handle different complaints and issues and things like that. Making progress on the airport. It's everything. Mission meeting, ten fifty report. All those issues have been addressed. Some of those were kind of chronic issues that have been, have been working at for Some of those were kind of chronic issues that have been, uh, been working out for years. I did have Scott for it and Raffin there, um, and let the auditor know exactly, um, the action plan for that. What items have been fixed. Have we keeping, uh, the airport board or advisory committee and, uh, the commission advised on that. So I think, uh, that's some good information. Two vehicles, or two trucks, fuel trucks, have been serviced and lost or wasted and working on. I think electric now, or seventeen landing lights on the route. I think all that, three of those are fixed, and we still have, it's the electric still working on all those electric issues. So, once again, we're continuing to make some improvements. Um, I will be, I might attend a meeting starting tomorrow, um, for a conference essentially on airport issues. Chairman, you asked me to do that, and so I think that would be, uh, good, once again, get some additional information. And, uh, see what's available out there and have a discussion on what other agencies and what counties, uh, are dealing with through airports. One of the issues I will be setting up, uh, maybe even as soon as the next commission meeting, is I think it can be very beneficial for this commission to go out and tour our root and rich department. Do need some pretty significant infrastructure improvements out there, such as, uh, a new building, actually for the staff. And I think that will become a parent of the action to work. And we can have Glenn kind of take us through, I know he's taken me through, and I'm showing some of the, uh, the problem areas and stuff. But that's certainly something that, uh, set up. A lot to take tomorrow. Will be, uh, obviously, uh, rude awakening yesterday, but we are definitely in fire season, so I'll be working with Tom and Jeff and Sheriff. We're looking at, working with the, uh, fire chiefs, things like that. Start looking at fire vans, uh, things like that. The other things that we probably need to work at is, uh, maybe a firework again as we start getting close to, uh, July fourth. High conditions and stuff like that, um, it's definitely advisable with the county, a bad fireworks. Once again, as I had said, we did make, um, progress in that meeting with Mark Mike Proline. We'll provide some information. That's out, and kind of moving forward with that. One of the issues, uh, dry conditions and wind. I'm not telling you, uh, personally, I don't know, but it's going to be a challenging wildfire season this year. I do think, uh, probably going to be keeping our resources close. As per, uh, the commission, what I heard there, I will be reaching out to the assessment and to the treasurer and, uh, requesting that, um, or else, yeah, but I do think, you know, all one county, working together. Yeah, to answer your question, I just sent out a second email yesterday, I sent that to Donna Stewart, uh, reference to the, uh, rant on the charging stations and things like that at EFA, and asked specifically about them doing the for us, which is what we've, uh, replies to.
If you don't hear anything, we'll definitely, we'll, we'll check, Martin Chavez.
Okay. Yeah, uh, the warden was sick today. But she did provide some information. She's bringing in revenues, um, at a, at a good rate. And once again, those revenues can be utilized to offset, um, costs. And, uh, just for the commissions, uh, just as a reminder, we contract with Union, San Miguel, Warth, and Taos. And we have a small contract with anger fire. And, uh, those contracts have been, uh, very beneficial. I think it worked, she estimates, uh, probably it was here today, about seven hundred three thousand. So, uh, once again, um, by bringing in those revenues, and I think, um, Commissioner Colonel, Vice Chair Colonel, will remember, we actually sat down and kind of created that, um, revenue source. And with that, we've been able to help fund, uh, Sheriff's, um, office and retention staffs. So, once again, I think, uh, that's a good process, and we're benefiting the citizens, and that's counting by offsetting those costs. Um, one of the challenges I think the job has right now is, uh, we're eight staff now, and that's pretty concerning, so the sheriff and I, we're going to go out and kind of meet with, uh, the warden. And just don't look at what we can do better. Some of the things, um, that I get recommended to the warden, and she is actively pursuing, is we did make up a brochure with, uh, school, uh, getting ready to get out in the summer, and we have faculty and seniors. We actually did produce a pamphlet, a brochure, that looks really good, and talks about the benefits of working for the county. Things like that, and so the warden is going to go out, see if she can talk to some of the kids, talk to some of the councils about bicycles, and things like that, to see if we can, uh, have some of our home run kids, actually sort of career, that scale. So, uh, continue, try to, who can, um, those challenges.
Thank you, Ken.
Just, just one question for, uh, the county manager, do you know, what's the status of the, uh, auctioning off of the surplus items that are out of the Rose Department?
Glad you asked that. That's one of the things that the, uh, the need to act on, and I have just told, uh, Tona that I can actually take a part in that. Talking with the Rose Superintendent. Glenn, how many years has stuff been accumulated out there, you say?
There's a bunch.
How many years?
Twenty-seven, beautiful.
Twenty-seven vehicles. So, anyway, um, that's one of our goals and objectives, moving forward on the vice chair. Is to actually, uh, work with the F A and, uh, get everything scored away on that, so that we can have a launch.
Yeah, I know, because I know we were working, kind of started to work on it before I even left, and I talked about it several times. I think we talked, we're going to do one way back, and, and that's, we know what happened there. But anyway, uh, it'd be nice, I know, as soon as we get done with budget and everything, we can push for that.
But that is one of our goals and objectives, and when we take the tour out there, you can see now how much stuff is out there.
I know.
Thank you all. I want to take a motion to adjourn this meeting. Second, okay, so we'll just say, and by of course.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you all.